Please rise.
For the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Roll call, please.
President Van Porckley.
Here.
President Prokhem Nars.
Here.
Councilmember Hobbs.
Here.
Councilmember Lamb.
Here.
Councilmember Luxinger.
Here.
Councilmember Matheson.
Here.
Councilmember Rudd.
Here.
President Van Porckley, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Presentations this evening, on a new published agenda, it has none, but we do not have one from Main Street, Oakland County as well?
I put those on the wrong agenda, that's why I had to amend the agenda.
Thank you. We have none.
They're going to be here in August.
Thank you. Item five, call to the public, we would like to ask that you limit your comments to five minutes, and it's for non-agenda items, and is there anybody that would like to step up for the call of public? Thank you, sir. Please come up, state your name and address.
Is this working? Nope. Okay. I'm George Dandalitis, I live at 226 Bellevue, and I'm here on behalf of Lola, the Lake Orion Lake Association, and the topic is the deep water draw for this year. Where I'm going to land is, we're requesting the village council to approve going forward with dropping lake level three feet, and to file a permit with the DNR to do so. So, I think everybody knows that we've typically done that every five years, done the deep drawdown, that's been going on since 1991. Our next opportunity, the fifth year, is this year. We have canvassed, in our membership drive, the Lake Orion residents, the Lake Orion, actually on the lake residents, as we typically do. On our questionnaire in that drive, we asked about whether they're in favor of or opposed to the deep water draw. We received 105 responses back in that survey. Eighty-four of those 105 were positive in support of the deep drawdown, there were six that were opposed, six out of the 105, and then 11 not sure, and then four that just left that blank. So we feel that statistically, that really supports the deep water draw for this year. We know that there's a concern for using the old pipe that's routed through a downtown building, and that we feel that's a valid concern. We feel that there's a possible contingency method, still using that pipe, but utilizing the foot drawdown that are available in the dam, so apparently there are some flappers, or I'm not sure exactly what you'd call them in the dam, but use to lower the water a foot every year. So we feel that using those flappers, in addition to the deep water pipe, could be a remedy, that could be back, let's say, in conjunction with the deep water tube, as an alternative. So again, we're requesting that the village council act on that, and apply for the permit, and carry that out for this year.
Thank you, sir. This is a hot topic for our community, and we just received some new correspondence. I'd like to suggest that we consider it for an agenda item for next meeting, when we can compile the data that we've got, use your data, and then also get the message out there for the general public, so they can participate.
Okay. Well, and we appreciate that, we understand, though, that the timing is starting to get late.
I agree, and I apologize, it's very short.
Okay, so if I understood right, then this will come up in the next meeting, it'll be on the agenda in the next meeting?
Mr. O'Neill.
Yes, Mr. President, if that's the pleasure of the village board, we can have that on the next meeting.
Do we need to make a motion on that, and have it approved at this point, or is it some, just to make a simple request like this, will it work?
Well, ultimately, you know, we follow the council, current council policy that's in review, would be to, I believe if there's sufficient time given, any one council member can have it added. Sounds like the president just asked to have it added, so I think it's pretty good.
I'd like to. Yes.
So I don't think you need a vote to ask to have it put on the agenda for consideration of the entire council.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We'll be back then, in two weeks, and be prepared to support then also, thank you.
Sounds good, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. Jerry, you may start the clock. Name is Harry Stephen, 311 North Shore. On the subject of drawdown, if there is a reason that it cannot be done, that's done by the state, I think we need to know what that reason is. Has there been something that's changed from state statutes that require us to jump through other loops to do the drawdown? Back to the lake again, according to a friend of mine telling me we have 300, or excuse me, 903 homes around the lake, and everybody has at least two boats, I think, on the lake, maybe more than that. That means that there are probably over 2,000 boats on this lake, that could be all used at once or not. I've done a little research on it, and I found that the standard for the carrying, or the density of boat usage, is acceptable for one boat for every 10 to 20 acres. Boy, do we ever go over the top on that. Now granted, not all of them are on the lake at the same time, but there are times when they are, and so we have a potential problem on the lake, for as far as density. A thing that I was thinking about, is those who have boats, they have their MC numbers, and they have state registrations. I'm wondering if it would be possible to have a local or municipal registry on boats, and put a sticker on the back, fee or no fee, so it's visible from the lake, as to whether somebody is a riparian, and people who are riparians would be entitled to these documents. Likewise, people who are in the marinas are a form of riparians, but they don't pay taxes for that, but maybe they could pay a small fee to get this sticker stuck on the back of their boat. The reason for the sticker on the back, is it's visible when a boat is moored. If it is not there, then there's a question, why? The only way now is to look for the MC number, which you've got to get up on somebody's property to look for the number, and then come and bother Harold, and have him look up the numbers and that, and that's a red tape. If everybody followed those rules, it would be good. On the way down tonight, I noticed that the parking lot at the corner of Flint and Andrews, Carl Scharowski, has a listing for sale, that is a piece of property that is now a parking lot, and it's zoned, according to him, as downtown center. I've never heard of that zoning characteristic as downtown center. Lastly, Oxford is to be congratulated, they just won a $250,000 grant from Consumers Power for their downtown development. Good job, Oxford. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Ken, Ken, I don't think that microphone's working.
None of them are.
Oh, are they?
No.
Okay.
Yes. Chief Rossman, sir. Good evening.
Hi, council. I just thought about doing this, a lot of the officers not aware that I'm doing this tonight, but I wanted to bring to your attention that we lost one of our members of the police department over a week ago. I'm going to read, I wrote a little something out, and I just would like to share it with all you and the residents of the village, of what kind of guy this guy was. We lost Officer Guy Higgins, he was one of our reserve officers. Officer Guy Higgins entered the service with the Lake Orion Police Department Reserve Officer Program on April 12th, 2017. After successfully completing the basic police reserve officer training academy at Crest, which is at the Auburn Hills Police Academy, as a reserve police officer, Higgins was awarded badge 926, and has faithfully served the Lake Orion Police Department and the Lake Orion Community for six years. Officer Higgins has at all times sought to assist at parades and events, and other public safety needs, over and above what was required. Officer Higgins worked a minimum of 1,471 hours, volunteered hours, for the village of Lake Orion. Officer Higgins was instrumental in equipping the department Humvee this day forward to be known as Unit 946. To the delight of the children and adults alike, who have seen it at its special events, therefore we proudly recognize and thank Reserve Officer Guy Higgins for six years of faithful service with the Lake Orion Police Department. Officer Higgins has continually demonstrated a willingness to meet the objectives of the department and provide exceptional service to the residents, businesses, and visitors of Lake Orion, serving with professional and honorable demeanor at all times. Reserve Officer Guy Higgins has brought credit to the department and himself. Officer Higgins was diagnosed approximately a year ago, a little bit a year ago, with a cancer in his jaw region. He fought valiantly, off and on, but it took him very quickly. So, with that, I just wanted to express our deep sorrow, the loss of one of our family members, and he did an outstanding job for us and the community, and I just wanted to recognize him tonight. Trying to kind of explain a little bit about the guy, and he was a wonderful human being. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Rossman. On behalf of the council, we expect our sorrow, we express our sorrow as well, our thank yous to the family for his service, and also prayers for the family at this time. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Jason Pelciere, Oat Soda, also the Commissioner of Pink Creek Trailways, representing the village. I apologize for not getting on the presentation docket this evening, I will be brief, and I just want to give you an update on the Tour de Trail event that we held on June 4th. First, thank you very much for allowing us to have the event, it was a true success. We shot and planned for 400 attendees, we didn't get that, but we wanted to create a beginning infrastructure that we could always use for a growing event. Our goals were to have a fun and safe event on National Trails Day, we partnered with that. We wanted to offer engaging information, educational experiences, provide income for the friends of the Pink Creek Trail, and support businesses along the route. We succeeded on almost all of those events, all those categories, we look forward to building on it in the future. One of the best outcomes of the event, lids for kids were there, and we were able to outfit about 39 youngsters with free helmets, so to protect their lids, so of all the, I think that was better even than the money we raised, just getting the helmets on kids' heads. We raised, right now in estimated, $2,937.53. That is still a growing number, we still have some shirts and things we are selling, and reconciling some other income. We look to have this event in the future, we probably will choose a different date other than June 4th, a lot is happening on a Saturday in the beginning of June, but I know Main Street Bikes is definitely looking to do something in the future as well. I do want to recognize a few of the village businesses that contributed through sponsorship dollars and/or services, Haney Farm Bureau, Builders Custom, Cookies and Cream, Main Street Bicycles, The Reared Family, Primetime Comics, Ed's Broadway Gifts, Heritage Spinning and Weaving, M&amp;B Graphics, Orient Arts Center, and the Lake Orion DDA contributed quite a bit. Last but not least, definitely in the village, the Lake Orion DPW, without any of those people I listed, we wouldn't have been able to have this event. So, that's all I have, thank you very much. Any questions for anybody?
I'd just like to say thank you for the successful event, you had 10 other businesses or participants involved, great community event, look forward to next year.
We'll definitely grow it in the future.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much, have a great night.
Yes. Anyone else for call to the public, non-agenda items? We will close the call to the public, and move on to the consent agenda. Our consent agenda this evening, yes, sir, Mr. Lamb?
I'd like to remove item Village Office Hours from the consent agenda, please.
You'd like to pull it for discussion?
Mike, can you repeat that, please, you put it here?
Item two.
Item two.
Mr. Lamb has asked to pull item two, Village Office Hours, for discussion. I'll read what else is on our consent agenda this evening. Item one is Michigan Homeowner Association Fund, MYHOF, Provider Participation Agreement. Item three would be Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee Appointment here in Crane. Item four, Police Department Reports from June of this year. Item five, Director's Report from July of this year. Item six, DDA Halloween Extravaganza Events Permit for October 19th of this year. Item seven, Lake Orion Leadership Homecoming Parade for 2022. Item eight, the New Foster Care 5K Run Walk for 2022. Item nine, Special Event Oktoberfest Beer Tent, September 9th and 10th, 2022. Item 10, 2022 Mears Retirement Annual Conference. Item 11, Employee Appreciation Dinner. Item 12, Approval of Village Council Regular Meeting Minutes from July 12th. And item 13, Downtown Development Authority Regular Meeting Minutes from June 14th. And we're going to pull that item two and discuss it after approval of this remaining consent agenda.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda with the removal of item two.
Support.
All those in favor, please indicate with aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
And, Mr. Lamb, Village Office Hours, sir?
I'm familiar with the item, the village administration's recommending changing the office hours from 7:00 AM to 4:30 PM, Monday, Thursday through Thursday, and being closed on Friday, effective August 1st, 2022. I think that's a great idea, but I would like to ask that the, with the approval of this, that the village manager notify the residents of the village of the change, either directly through first-class mail, or through the promulgation of some type of newsletter, stating what's going on in the village. I've had 20 calls this week about the drawdown, and I think something this important, I don't want to get 20 calls about the village offices were closed on Friday, so if you, I would be happy to move the recommended motion, with the addition that the village administration notify the village residents of the change.
I'll support.
Dissection. Mr. O'Neill?
Yes, sir.
Possible?
Yes, it's possible. I'm thinking that we do water bills, and there's a place on water bills to notify them, so there isn't an extra cost to the city. Now, most everybody will look at their water bill and see how much they have to pay, and if we have something, and there's a note section, I believe, on all water bills, and if we can just put something on maybe the next couple of water bills, that will save us some costs, but I will check in and see how we can do that the most efficient way.
Sufficient? Thank you.
The only thought I had is we just got a water bill, so the next water bill won't come out until October, for the third quarter.
Well, that would be the first thing I would check in, and that would be Plan B, which would be something else.
Can we also post that on the village website?
Yeah.
And the front door.
And the newspaper.
Yeah, newspaper.
Could we do that, or in review?
The reporter that covers your city, we just introduced ourselves, he will be here Wednesday, I already talked with him about doing some type of item, and that'd be an excellent thing to have in the newspaper for a brief.
I think he's taking notes as we speak.
So, or in review will get behind it and help us get the word out, and thank you, Mr. New. Okay, we have a motion on the floor, support, all those in favor, please indicate with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Item seven, approval of the agenda, by order of the president chair, no matters will be discussed after 10:30 unless the council or the board votes to continue the meeting. I'd like to ask for one change this evening, and I'll be there, Mr. Lamb. I'd like to add consideration and agenda item, add approval of a proclamation for Mr. Joe Young to the council, just to see if we can utilize this proclamation this week at his event, and I'd like to add that as other items, item four. And, Mr. Lamb?
I have two items I would ask, they're really not controversial, to add to the agenda tonight, and they could be brief. One is I'd like to add the, some agenda item where we can have a brief discussion on the direction we would like the administration to go, with regarding to the study of an ordinance regulating boat capacity down the lake, this is a reoccurring topic, we just briefly discuss whether we should take some action, so I would move that agenda item, to have a brief discussion, is whether we should take action of any kind, or study boat capacity on the
So, you're making that as a motion?
Well, yeah, I tagged it agenda, I thought, then we have to make a motion, someone second, then we either vote on it, tag it to the agenda.
We have to do yours first, and then each one individually.
So, and what's your sixth one, sir, your additional one?
The additional one would be to have the same kind of brief discussion about the There's been so many calls, I think we should make a decision as to what direction we're going, not necessarily voting on the drawdown, but voting on whether or not we are going to study the situation, whether we're going to put it off for next year, I would like to make some comments, and I'm not asking to take action, I'm asking that we have a brief discussion at the council level about where the administration's going to go with the issue of the drawdown. We have a new village manager, I think he could use a little direction. Those are two items I'd request to be added to the agenda.
So, we have one additional item for the proclamation, consideration for Mr. Joe Young, I'll make that motion.
Support.
To add to the agenda. All those in favor, please indicate with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item five, a ordinance regulating boat capacity discussion.
I would make that motion, just to have a brief discussion on what direction to advise the administration proceed on, whether we should get involved in the boat capacity. There's been numerous letters, numerous calls.
I think it's a great discussion, but I, and I'm not opposed to it, I'd just like to see if we could get some information prior.
We need to direct him to get some information, so it'd be appropriate having the agenda item, directing him to gather the information, that's what the motion would be for.
I support.
All those in favor, please indicate with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And then item number six, drawdown discussion for direction.
So I would make the same motion for the drawdown, just so we can issue a direction to the village manager on how to proceed with the, what he should do with regard to these recent letters received, and the public's cry for the drawdown. I think we should give the administration some direction on how to proceed with that, so my motion would be to have a brief discussion on how we, what we would recommend to the village administration.
And that would be to set standards, because we already have agreed to allow it, or have it as an agenda item on the next meeting.
I think we should have this a little more discussion.
Support.
All those in favor, please indicate aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Thank you.
Okay. So we've got some agenda items here, we'll move on to public hearing.
We have to approve the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, we need to approve the agenda with all the additions. Motion, please.
Move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
All those in favor, please indicate with aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Item eight, public hearing, consideration of creation of a commercial rehabilitation district for West Village, 55 West Elizabeth Street. Mr. O'Neill?
Yes, I'm going to defer to the city attorney, the village attorney, and listen. Mr. President, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Tonight on the agenda is the public hearing, the first of two, to consider the creation of a commercial rehabilitation district for West Village at 55 West Elizabeth Street. This is the first step to establish whether or not the proposed district meets the statutory requirements for a district. This isn't the approval of the actual certificate of exemption or tax abatement, this is just whether or not it meets the criteria to establish a district. Among those considerations would be whether or not it meets the definition of a commercial property.
property, in this case, multifamily residential use, I think requires at least five residential units in a multifamily use, has to be over three acres, this is just over three acres, and some other things that are really kind of not really that important, like local unit of government, the village is a local unit of government. So basically, you're here to decide whether or not they meet the qualifications of a district, take public comment from the public as to the creation of that district, either for or against, and then we've laid out the process by which it's transmitted to certain other state authorities, approved or denied by those authorities, comes back again for another public hearing before this body for determination of whether or not to issue an actual certificate, and how long that certificate would be good for. You have one to 10-year window to consider that certificate, but again, that's a later date, that's not something for discussion, really, or consideration tonight, certainly you can discuss it, but really, that's not what you're voting on tonight, whether or not they meet the statutory requirements of a commercial rehabilitation district. If you decide to deny it, that, there's, there's two proposed resolutions that will be considered later on in the agenda, after the public hearings conducted tonight, to, then presented with both, either to approve or deny. My reading of the law requires a resolution if you deny it, to enact a resolution denying it, as well as a resolution if you decide to approve it tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we have presenters here, you'd like to present?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of council, members of the public, it's good to see everyone again. Matthew Gibb, my address for the record, Madam Clerk, is 930 Lakewood. I'm here with Kyle Westburg, Bob Davis, who's one of his operational chiefs, and we're here about West Village. We're very pleased, I want to applaud the work of your village attorney, not to give an attorney-to-attorney kudos, but he's been very much on top of the procedural aspects of this, and gave an excellent recitation to you of where we're at in the procedure. For the benefit of the public, it is our intention, and has been our intention as a project developer for this project, to move forward with an ask, an ask for an exemption certificate of 10 years on a commercial rehabilitation tax abatement. But we're not at that stage yet. We have lots of homework to do. Where we're at on the project, and again, mostly for the benefit of the public, and I apologize to the good council members who has heard this on a few occasions now, Westburg Construction, I mean, sorry, West Construction, Kyle Westburg has purchased the property, and so they are the fee owners of the property. This isn't something where we're gambling that we could get some type of an approval. The group is all in, so to speak. We have made that commitment to the project and have undertaken a significant amount of other steps. We've worked on the engineering, including the work that we has given to you, that our work with the school district to make sure that the stormwater retention, the excess parking, all of those items that have been part of the dialogue have been significantly moving forward. When we get to the point where we're asking for the actual exemption, we'll go in much more detail about what that means, the, some of the talking that has happened in the village that I'm certainly aware of, as to, well, what does it mean for the DDA, and is the DDA too large, those types of things. We're more than happy to engage on what project like this does to impact a community, but for tonight, for the creation of a district, just want to reflect, what does it mean from an economic impact to have a district like this within your village? What does it open you up for? It opens you up for the opportunity for you to ask, for you to say to an applicant like ourselves, well, what really is the benefit? What are the public benefits of your exemption certificate? Without creating the district, you of course can't ask us that, because there wouldn't be a procedural thing to do, and we of course can't ask you for the help. But what are the public benefits? We're clearly intending to rehabilitate a long, unused structure in the community. As you've all seen, and I've certainly seen over the last several months, the vandalism has again started, and we're doing our best to keep that down, but there's graffiti and there's more broken windows, and quite frankly, the quicker we can get this project under construction, the quicker that goes away, and the quicker that that facility really becomes alive again. That's a benefit to the community, and historic preservation has a benefit to the community. In the materials that you have, one of the biggest things that we project is the level of investment, which is estimated close to $21 million of all-in investment, that means everything loaded to the table, about $21 million in your community. The core investment of the rehabilitation, which would fall somewhere between $6 and $8 million, would have an immediate impact of 180 to 200 construction jobs. It would have a residual impact of 10 to 15 jobs at the site, and you can anticipate, if it wasn't us asking you for an exemption later, that by creating the district, you would open the opportunity for someone else to come and ask you for that, that relief, saying, what would you do there? Creating a district simply invites someone to come and ask, and, and have the ability to explain, but we know our project will result in those job impacts, they'll also result in a residual impact. It's very, very interesting math, and very, very straightforward math, to look at when there is an investment of a rehabilitation and historic preservation of certain dollar amounts in a community such as Lake Orion, what is the impact? We know that our impact will likely have upwards of an 18 to $20 million immediate impact over the first two years up here. That's the spending power of the residents that would come, that's the spending power of the activity that would be there, the community benefits of the use of the gymnasium that we're going to have for uses. So this is information the public knows, this is the information that all of you know. As your good attorney has said tonight, and I concur, the procedural step is for you to consider our application to the village for a three-plus acre parcel that meets the criteria of the statute, and if council is inclined, you would say, yeah, we're willing to hear you out at the next step with no promises or guarantees. You'll have to do your homework, you'll have to come and prove more than what you're talking about tonight, Mr. Gibb, and we're prepared to do that. And so we're here to answer questions about what the district would mean, what it means for that property, and I think, just to close, I don't need to reiterate the, the pathway that, that this group has taken to try to make this project a reality. The state of Michigan continues to build but struggle with the administration of its economic development programs. A program like this is really in their crosshairs of being an excellent, excellent program for them to support. But to do that, as we've said before, the community has to participate in a substantive and substantial way. We did not choose to do the obsolete property rehabilitation district, which would capture everything, it would capture school taxes and all kinds of taxes, would also be 12 years. We did not seek to have an extended TIF for this project, meaning we could have looked at mischda financing and had a different way to approach the residential, and so we're not looking for a 30-year payment in lieu of taxes agreement. Those much more onerous and burdensome techniques were set aside with the idea of, we would ask for you to create a district so we could come and explain from a very real standpoint how many years, from one to 10, would be appropriate, that the state would be satisfied to participate in the many ways that they want to participate to make this historic renovation happen. So tonight's the creation of the district, and we'll be back, and I'll give a similar presentation, but that one will be much more detailed on what the numbers are, what the actual abatement relief would be, with the impact on the DDA, and we're certainly prepared to do that, and excited that you might consider this district tonight. And I can answer any questions from the public as they come up, Mr. President, as you allow.
Thank you. Any comments from the public? Yes, sir?
Kevin Broslin, 215 Elizabeth Street. With regard to granting this commercial district, what tax burden will this represent for the village, the village residents and taxpayers? Do we know?
Do not know at this time.
Okay.
We don't know what the ask is, sir.
Okay. Does granting this open the door for other developers to want to come in and do the same thing for more multifamily developments in our residential, primarily residential little village? Are we going to get more apartments and zoning exceptions for high-rise buildings?
It's, it's a case-by-case consideration, accurate, council?
Correct.
Okay, so there's no, no answer, it's to be determined in each case?
Each case stands on its own, they are not grandfathered in any way by decisions that were made on other cases. Is that accurate, council?
Correct.
And then the determination of what, if any, tax burden this will represent to the village, what will that information be provided?
Once we know what the ask is, we should be able to calculate that, and we don't know that yet. It's a negotiable circumstance of one to 10 years, and we don't know what their considerations, what their ask may be, at what kind of an amount. And there's an annual review each year to make sure that they remain in compliance with the criteria that goes along with the granting of the creation of a commercial rehabilitation district, and if they were to fault at any one of those, in any one of those years with not providing the number of jobs that they promised they would do, things like that, then it can be rescinded. Accurate, council?
Absolutely.
And once the determination or an estimate of what the tax, potential tax burden may be for the village, will the citizens of the village, taxpayers have an opportunity to be involved in that conversation, or is it going to be expedited to a decision?
I expect that to be part of the next hearing's discussion.
Correct. If council chooses to move forward and establish the district tonight, there'll be a second public hearing where those numbers will be firmed up, right now they're just estimates, and then that'll be part of the next public hearing, which, there's some process steps in between there, so it'll be a little while, yeah.
Okay. And then lastly, what will the, if we went with a 10-year period, do we have an idea of what that represents in the form of savings slash profits for the developer by not having to pay the taxes for the 10-year period?
We have, in our correspondence, this is an example. The applicant projects that if an eventual commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate is issued by the village, then a current tax of $3,722.57 would be frozen at that amount, and that approximately $53,955 would be abated annually for the term of the certificate.
Okay.
That's a generalization.
It's about a half million dollars-ish.
Over a period of 10 years.
Right.
Using those numbers.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Stevens, sir?
Terry Stevens, 311 North Shore. The Eman Center, which is the core element here, was a building that was built in the mid-1920s, and as we all know, there are problems with buildings from that era that need to be remediated in some fashion. This would be known by the West Corporation when they started the program, that this was a known, difficult situation that they had to encounter. They've moved forward. I agree that the Eman Center is part of the rehabilitation aspect, but the main part of the new development is equivalent to a greenfield development, naked property that could have been anywhere that the development could put in, that number of units that we're talking about. So I think the rehabilitation only applies to the Eman Center, not the entire property.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Good evening.
My name's Dr. Brunton Balo, I own 230 East Elizabeth, and the new owner of 54 West Elizabeth, so right across the street from the high school. So I am in support of a commercial district, definitely, with one stipulation, and that is, truthfully, I'd love a coffee shop or a sandwich shop across the street from my, my new residence, that would be great. But at the same time, the windows are broken, the graffiti's on the wall, something needs to happen. So, am I supporting this? Absolutely. At the same time, that new residence I own for three weeks now, it's a racetrack. So I don't know if you guys can do something at that corner, whether it be a roundabout, where it's not a straight shot, a quarter-mile straight shot from, from Broadway up to Kroger's, but truthfully, that is the biggest, biggest issue I have. We're already going to get much more traffic with, with the new apartments coming in or condos, and I understand that. Do we need the tax base? Absolutely. We need some new roads here. So, yes, we do need that, and I do support it, but please, when you take into your considerations, make sure you do something with that corner, whether it's more stop signs would be an absolute minimum, but truthfully, I'd rather see something with a, a pretty roundabout, a nice concrete barrier in the front that says, welcome to Lake Orion, where people can't make it a straight shot, and they have to slow down and come to almost a stop to get around that corner and head up, head up Kroger, because it seems like if there's anything going on downtown, Elizabeth to Washington is everybody's get around to get out to Orion Road or the other side of town, but please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, good evening.
Good eve, no, it doesn't work, does it? Good evening, I'm Burgett McQuiston, 440 North Broadway. I didn't know what rehab, rehab, commercial rehab act or designation was, so I did some homework on it, and I'm reading off of a PDF from our state government that says, under what requirements for a commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate must be met to gain approval at the local government unit level, and one of those states, the applicant states in writing that the rehabilitation of the qualified facility would not be undertaken without the applicant's receipt of the exemption certificate. That leads me to ask the question, does that oblige you to provide that for them, or does that mean they'll pull out if they don't get it? It's my only question.
Thank you. I can't answer that. I don't know. Yes, sir?
Greg, Greg McQuiston, 440 North Broadway. I've been listening intently to try to understand, what is the advantage to the village of granting this tax exemption? And I've heard job creation, I think, I'm not sure I've heard much else besides that, so I'm not really sure what the village gains in exchange for foregoing the income.
Anyone else? Close the, Mr.?
Well, if I could just answer a couple of the questions, Mr. President, so they're on the record as part of the public hearing.
You're welcome.
Regarding the traffic, and welcome to the neighborhood, we love Lake Orion, and we're glad to have you at that location. There is, and it's part of the site plans that have been proposed to satisfy the parking counts, that there will be an improvement to the road, significant improvements, including the parking, which will include very defined on-street parking, which usually has a very calming effect, but we'll certainly take into account what you're saying about maybe some other design elements that would calm some traffic. As to the question of, that, Mr. McQuiston, I wouldn't doubt with how smart she is that she would raise the question of, it is a requirement at the exemption certificate level that if we're not able to get an exemption certificate, we've been very consistent from the beginning, it's extremely hard to finance this, because if we can't get some participation from the local level, the state will not participate. And so if the state will not participate, then all of the ability to, to put this together financially really comes apart. And so we've been very consistent, Mr. President, and members of council, and that isn't no way obligating you. It's not, it always seems like it is, it's like, oh, it's this or else, it's the reality of this type of, of project, and then, let me see that quick. Just in case these answer some of the other questions, I know Mr. McQuiston asked about, well, what is the village really getting out of it? The, the rehabilitation and preservation of a 1926 school building, the use of the rear ball fields for additional residential development within the community is a real significant factor. It's, as we've represented all along, that without creating a district of this nature and considering some form of an exemption certificate, many have tried, and it would be extremely difficult to rehabilitate that property at all, in, in the way that it sits. Improvements to the, the public parking lot areas, the bus stop on Elizabeth Street, new landscaping, lighting and paving, converting the school gym to the court at West Village, more events, and making dates available for annual use by the village and the DDA, the streetscape along the Pier Street, wayfinding signage and others. Instal- along La Pier Street, wayfinding signage and others, installation of historic markers, enhancement of the streetcape. So all of those things will be, have been presented in the past, and just want to reiterate and further your record that, well, what would be the benefit of creating a district? Whether it's us or someone else, I would hope that those are some of the committed benefits. You would create a district so that someone would come in and present to you, here's why we need the numbers, here's why we need this additional financial assistance on the $20 to $21 million package, here's why the state won't participate if we can't do that, oh, and by the way, here are the significant enhanced benefits for rehabilitating this project. So I just wanted to add that to the record, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Has everybody had their opportunity? We'll close the public hearing at this time. Thank you very much, everyone. Moving on to item nine, agenda items for consideration, financial matters. Mr. O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have one adjustment on the bills to be paid, Center Parks and Recreation, contractual services, the recording secretary, he got us in the wrong places the second time in a row, and the wrong number was transposed, and that will be corrected.
Can you tell me which account it's supposed to be in? 721. 721.
So does that change--
She's the planning commission secretary.
The recommended motion stays the same?
Yes.
Continue motion.
I'm approving approval. Bill states 746.22, amount of $242,000, the average is $3,005. Of which $13,116,30 cents are DDA bills for a net village amount of $230,666.25 cents as received by the DDA bills in the amount of $13,116,30 cents.
Support. Any other additional challenges, discussion? Roll call, please.
Hobbs?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Luxinger?
Yes.
Rutt?
Yes.
Van Porffley?
Yes.
Matheson?
Yes.
Narge?
Yes.
Motion, Harry, 7-0.
Thank you. Moving on to the other items, item one, consideration of creation of a commercial rehabilitation district for West Village, 55 West Elizabeth Street. Mr., go ahead. I was going to let Mr. O'Neill, if he had anything he wanted to say, we've got the background brief before us, and I believe we, did we even read it or cover it prior to the presentation?
No. I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Any additional comment from council on this item?
Well, I just, if I may, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to direct council's attention that those numbers are purely estimates provided in the application that was submitted some time ago, subject to change. A lot of the good conversations, questions about benefit to the public in the village, and those types of things are all appropriately considered at the next public hearing for creation of the actual certificate or granting of a certificate if this board chooses to do so. Right now, the focus is on whether or not it meets the statutory requirements, and I listed some in the initial conversation earlier. The other one was, does it meet the definition of rehabilitation, meaning changes to a qualified facility that are required to restore, modify the property, together with all appurtenances, to an economically efficient condition? So those are the things you'd be looking at, if I'm happy to answer any questions about what those, but my legal review of it appears that the applicant, on its face, meets the qualifications for creation of a district under the statute.
So I agree with the board. I move to approve, to adopt Resolution 2022-03 to establishing a commercial rehabilitation district number two for West Village located at 55 Elizabeth Street, vote for Lake Orion, Michigan, pursuant to Commission Public Act 210 of 2022.
Support. Discussion? Mr. Lamb?
Somebody has to talk. So I don't, I don't recommend approval of this at all. I see no benefit to any tax abatements for any projects within the village. We have another developer who's going to do 60 million, he's not asking for any tax abatements or special requirements. Considering the financial status of the village and having no money for infrastructure, my wife can't walk down our road because the pavement condition is so poor, my understanding is theirs, is it $6 million in failing pump stations on the island? And there's also $6 million of water main rehabilitation still left to do. And it's yet to hear from anyone on the council as to where any money will be coming for any of these necessary unit improvement. Needless to say, so my direction is not tax abatement, perhaps we need to increase the taxes on the commercial property. Because of the heavy burden, hundreds of extra apartments are going to put on the My understanding is this is going to be some kind of brownfield redevelopment, we're going to get some money from the county to clean up the asbestos, but now ask for a direct tax abatement against the community. So my comments are, I'm going to vote no on any tax abatements in the Village of Lake Orion, because I'm involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I believe that we've had multiple opportunities, or developers come before us on this piece of property, and nothing has come forward as an end result. And this firm is intent, they've already purchased the property, they're intent on going forward with the best effort that they can have. By approving this tonight, it gives us the opportunity to see and learn what some of the other items are as far as how much, what's the ask, what's the give. This building's been vacant for approximately 35 years. The public has cried out, in many cases, do something, save it, work with us, figure it out. So by voting on this district establishment tonight, that gives us the opportunity to consider. Anyone else? Yes, Ms. Narge.
Yeah, this one, I'm telling you as well, watching that building decompose over the years, I liken this, almost like you've got a car out front of your house, you've got a set, it's sat there for 30 years, and nobody's taken it, nobody's buying it. When somebody comes by and says, you knocked a thousand off, I'll take it. What was once a beautiful building has become the blank of the building of Lake Orion. To bring that back to life, Mr. Stevens brought up some value points about the rehabilitation costs with the asbestos and other issues inside that building. And as was also brought up, that each of these projects, as they come forward, there may be another development where they don't need that because they don't need the state assistance and the state government to come in and help, and then we finally have somebody coming in. So I want to hear the numbers, and I want people on the line, and that's for the next meeting, so this purpose is to get us there. And we've got somebody picking the tires, and I told Jalapi, who's been sitting out there for 30 years for the full sale sign, so I'm excited to hear.
Any other comments? We have, we have support on that motion, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So I'd like to call, a roll call, please, on the motion that's been presented.
Lamb?
No.
Luxinger?
Yes.
Rutt?
Yes.
Van Porffley?
Yes.
Hobbs?
Yes.
Matheson?
Yes.
Narge?
Yes.
Motion, Harry, 6-1.
Thank you. Item two on this evening's agenda, Green Park Hours. And I'd like to begin this with, you want to give us a quick brief, Mr. O'Neill?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, I've had discussions with members of the board, and I believe there's a Parks and Rec meeting tomorrow, and this could be something that could be discussed there. In my haste to put this on the agenda, get those docks installed, I'm not going to think about stepping on anybody's toes on the Parks and Rec Commission. But my thought process was, if we're going to do this, there may have to be some modification. There are green park relative to, people who want to use the DDA, you bring their boats over there, and dusk to dawn, we know that some people won't even get over to the DDA area until dusk, and we have the docks there. So while we want to maximize the use of the docks and green park and the DDA, we might have to have some give and take. So I'm not sure, excuse me, what comes first, the chicken or the egg? So I would defer to the board if you wanted to wait and have the P&amp;R board take a look at this, give their thoughts on it. Maybe they're all for, I don't know. I'm not looking at drastic changes, but I'm going to be looking at some things and talked with Wes today about some things we want to do with the locks on the bathroom. It's all going to be positive for Greens Park. It's going to increase the traffic. I didn't realize that there was a permit specifically for that park pass, so, you know, one has to take a look, do you want to charge them double because they're going to be using the docks? Now they have to pass through the park. So, you know, there has to be some give and take. So with that, I would defer to the board, what you think is best, if you want to wait, and we'll put the docks in anyway. But if you want to wait and have the Parks and Rec Board take a look at this tomorrow at their meeting, and put this off to August, there's no rush on that, but we'll put the docks in anyway.
I did not make a motion to adjourn the session to the first meeting in August, because I truly want this to go before Parks and Rec, to get some input, and involved in that process, and I actually did this. So we're just moving. It looks better for me.
Support. Mr. Lamb?
So as a positive comment on this issue, you know, during our recent discussions with the Mosheri Corporation, and they have a planned unit development proposed for the property directly adjoining the park. During one day, I was able to go with one of the park representatives at the park, and we noticed there were quite a few issues with the park, with the dumpster, the fences, access to the new proposed boat docks. And I might ask that we suggest to the Parks Commission that they entertain a dialogue with Mosheri about utilizing, since the PUD is supposed to utilize to the benefit of the village, that we could indeed, instead of having a paved, you know, paved, Mosheri's proposing a paved ramp through the park for an ambulance in their project, might I suggest it might be more beneficial that he would spend his money on items that could address what we've discussed here.
And again, that Parks and Recreation meeting is tomorrow night, and I agree, I would like to have that board please offer their suggestions as to what they would like to see. They work very hard with very little money and give us great fruits here in our community. And so I look forward to what their recommendation may be. We have a motion on the floor, support. Anybody else? Yes, sir, Mr. O'Neill.
Yeah, Mr. President, what I would do is I would prepare a packet for councilperson Rutt, so she could take that to the board tomorrow night and have as much complete information as possible.
Thank you, sir. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate a aye. Aye. Close. Thank you very much. Item three, asset management software. Mr. O'Neill?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. You see, I have a brief synopsis of what we want to do with this. There were some questions asked of me relative to the proprietary use of the information that we would have, and whether or not, once we developed the information, it would go on these tablets, that we wouldn't have a problem with this information, and that the company that's hosting wouldn't hold it hostage. With that, I would turn it over to Wes, because he's been the point person on this, and he has additional information on how they will use this in the field.
Good afternoon, everybody. So, Mr. O'Neill asked me today, you know, about the proprietary, our information. Our information will always be our information. If we purchase this software and don't like it in three weeks, three months, three years, 30 years, our software's our software, our data's our data. We can take it with us to another asset management. Currently, we get five to 15 mistigs a day. When somebody does work in the village, they call in misting, any underground digging. Okay? So my guys go out there and they mark the water. WRC marks the sewer. When we get out there, we have a book in a binder that says the water stop, stop box is six feet from the fence, four feet from the utility pole. Things change, things move, so what this software will do, it'll digitalize all that, it'll take everything we own, and not just for the DPW, it'll work for the police as well. They can do, you know, what does Ray do? Code enforcement. They can do code enforcement on this, they can, you know, tab what's where and what's not, dropdown menus for all of our fire hydrants, our streets, our sidewalks, our light poles. It puts all of our assets in one place where we can pool that data, we know when something's out, something's bad, last time it's been touched. As it sits now, we've had four directors in the last 20 years, and everybody had a different filing system. So if you were to ask me right now, when the last time the hydrants were painted, I go in a file, and I start searching through paper, and then I find a document from the guy who did it in the field with a bunch of chicken scratch on it and whatnot. This just puts it all in one spot. If you have any questions for me, I'm more than happy to answer.
Ms. Rutt?
How long will it take to move all of these records into this software?
Noah and Fraus, our engineers, already have it ready. As soon as we say go, the representative from this company will start importing it immediately. He will come to the village for two weeks, it's all included, train our guys on the tablets. It's open source, so we will purchase one tablet from them with all the information, but we have our own iPads that we can cloud-based, it's all, you know, we can access it, unlimited users, unlimited cloud space, unlimited data.
What will be the criteria for making sure that it's maintained properly and new data gets put in?
That is actually the easiest--
The policy.
The easiest part to it. Our current GIS, and GIS is pretty much the industry standard, right? Everybody uses it from sewers to water to light poles, DT, everybody uses GIS. You almost have to be a surveyor to use that pole with that, the round thing. This comes with a simple geolocating device that attaches to that tablet, point and click, bring up your asset, you give it a name, you give it an icon, it inputs it, it geolocates it, and then it's in the system. So we get a new hydrant, we can simply go to it, point, click, it tags it, it puts it in the system, it's ours now.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes. One of the things that Wes and I talked about today that, and I was asked by members of this board, was where are we with our sidewalk? And walking the sidewalks and finding all that, that's, this is perfect for that. And you find a Tri-Paz or whatever, take your picture, geolocate it, put your notes in there, and go to the next one.
Very good. Mr. Lamb?
I had a question about the old geo pole. What are your plans for that? eBay?
It's been sitting in the corner of the office for as long as I've been in, and before that, I know Jeremy has had the same place.
So how old is it?
Probably about six years old, seven years old. Maybe older.
Are you going to put it up for public auction?
Absolutely.
Let me know.
Okay.
I may need one. I move to authorize the purchase of an asset management program with an upfront cost not to exceed $7,300, and an annual reoccurring cost of $2,100, which breaks on as follows: $2,000 setup fee, $1,500 annual fee, one Apple GPS tablet device, $3,200, a reoccurring data fee-- data fee of $600, which breaks down to $50 per month, for a total of $7,300.
Further discussion? Mr. Sanchez, I believe this is going to help improve the performance or the ability of the DPW to do more with their time. Any kind of performer, have you thought about that much? Like, there's the initial expense and then it's $2,100 annually after that, but what's the return? I'm sure it's great, what could it possibly be? Like another 20 man-hours a month, 10 man-hours a month, not having to look through the old record system that, I mean, what might it be?
I'll give you an example. A normal mistig, we go, we locate the water, like I said, we paint, spray paint, we do the marks on the road that you guys see. So we spray paint the main, we locate the water shut off at the residence, we paint it. One day, and this just happens to be Mr. Lamb, we were on North Shore, Chris and I, my foreman, the two most senior people here for the DPW. We went to locate a curb stop, two hours, took us two hours. The book said it was, it was here. We had 15 holes dug in this guy's dirt driveway looking for this stop box, but it wasn't where they said it was. Two hours of our time digging and...
So that case there could have been just a 15-minute, well, 30-minute deal to drive over there, pinpoint it and do it as opposed to two hours to try to determine. Mr. Narsh.
Yeah, another really cool advantage of this for the Chief of Police Department of Public Safety is, and I believe this is a purpose, is you can actually then geotag and get precise numbers of every traffic control sign in the building.
Every sign.
So every stop sign, every yield sign, every cell phone here is ordered. So as those CCOs are issued, those sites go up, they get tagged, then you have an accurate number of all the signage, what they look like. So there's a public safety component in there that's extremely helpful. Because right now, you have to walk, hand it out, do all that stuff, every time you got a question, then you stick it to the fly. So there's a public safety component as well.
As well as that, there's a lot more transparency. We have a lot of accounts in the village. We have accounts at Ace, Home Depot, you know, we purchase a lot of things to fix things, right? Something breaks, we have to get parts to fix it. With this, we can take a picture of that receipt, put it with that asset. This hydrant's cost us $30 in the last six months, et cetera. And I talked to the engineers today, the code enforcement thing is new. So we'll have a map of the village and, you know, it has layers. So you have all your houses, you can, you can see which houses have been in code violation. Click a button, it'll show you red dots where all the code violations are. So the enforcement officer just needs to drive by those to see if they've been addressed.
Very good. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, support. Roll call, please.
Lund Sanger.
Yes.
Rudd.
Yes.
Van Fortfleet.
Yes.
Hobs.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. Item four, proclamation consideration for Mr. Joe Young. We have one before us this evening that we'd like to utilize in an upcoming event, and I'd entertain a motion of approval. So moved. All those in favor, please indicate with an "I." I oppose. Thank you. Item five, ordinance regarding boat capacity on Lake Orion. Mr. Lamb, if you would like to open, if you have, start the discussion as you said, suggest.
Sure, so I live on North Shore Drive, I have one boat. My neighbors have no boats to, two or three boats. I have two neighbors that rent boat slips to, I won't name the rent boat slips, to friends, family members. I have one neighbor who doesn't have a boat and lets a friend park their boat at their dock. When we go out to the lake, especially during the holidays and things, you'll see that the flotillas, party rafts, and presence of the number on the boats is, it seems like it's doubled in the last 10 years. I'm actually waiting for someone to be injured. The number of jet skis and sports boats has also increased. The sailboats have disappeared and so there's been a lot of changes. I, so my neighbors have all, you know, said to me, how is it that we have these several, I'm not going to point fingers again, we have several marinas on the lake that appear to be functioning marinas. And they have, you know, 10 boats, eight boats, nine boats. And they ask me, who regulates these boats? Who regulates the lake? Who controls any of the issues on the lake? And I say, I don't know. I said, I read every ordinance in the charter of the Village of Lake Orion, there doesn't appear to be any regulations in the Village of Lake Orion regarding the lake, other than we can't sell any of our lakefront property without a vote of the public. So that being said, I think just based on public safety, it's time we take some kind of act. I recently read another study where the wake boats generate something like 10 times the effective energy when they come cruising along the shoreline. So I have, you know, neighbors with low sea walls or no one at all, and, you know, the, so the wake boats are now washing the shore, disrupting people's patios, you know, things of this nature. I ask, is there any regulation regarding boats? And it's like, no, you're entitled to have a boat. It's your right to have a boat. So I believe it's time for the village to address one important issue is, how many boats should be on the lake? Why shouldn't we have an ordinance recommending we can only have so many boats per household? I mean, there's a fixed number of dwelling units on our lake. The recent, the Mosheri development, I asked some Mosheri people this evening, were they going to increase the number of docks on their projects? They said yes, we're going to add nine additional docks for, of course, all three projects. They'll be adding nine additional docks. However, they're going to be totally eliminating all boat rental. As you know, there's quite a boat rental fleet on the weekends that used to come from the marina and still come. So pretty much we're going to have a fully developed lakefront in the next two or three years, once some Mosheri projects are done. We have an ever-increasing number of boats on the lake. There seems to be no regulation. I think we need to investigate who has authority on the lake? Do we have authority on the lake? And should we take authority on the lake? So these are just questions. And I think the appropriate person to do that would be the village administration. And I see before me tonight, there were dropped off some letters about the drawdown, and I've seen letters here about the boats and the wake boats. I've seen people all summer and all winter this year, we've seen a lot of people. I would recommend that we find some direction to take a steady course ahead for the future of the lake. It's really deteriorating.
Ms. Luschinger.
I would like to ask the village attorney, can we get an update on the ordinance review process? We had a third part of the MUNICode.
Yeah, didn't somebody, didn't Ms. Preacher get back to you on that? You asked that previously.
Yes.
Okay, I'll ask you.
Yeah, and then maybe there's some sample legislative language that we could look at with regards to boats.
Ms. Rudd.
Yeah, a couple of questions I have, I'm very open to exploring these because I have heard similar complaints and concerns from people who live on the lake. So would love directions, what, what can we do, what can't we do? Also keeping in mind, this is a multi-jurisdictional, dual jurisdictional lake. So how do we balance that when there's also the township portion of the lake that our ordinances wouldn't cover? Could there be a joint municipal effort? So are there other examples of places that have dual jurisdictional lakes that have partnered or maybe have separate ordinances? So that's in the back of my mind, too. How do we do that and try to keep it fair for every? Oh, yeah, all those issues are questions I have to explore with this.
Ms. Narsh.
So there's a couple of huge moving parts here. There's who owns the surface of the water versus the bottom of the water. We all know Mr. Rumelmann owns the bottom of the water. But the DNR, what is law, what they locally dispossess, how they enforce and regulate on in the lakes, the DNR regulates in the lakes. So I think the first step is you have to look at what part of regulation does the state play and do they allow local municipality? That may be an attorney opinion. The other thing is, that's one piece. The other discussion was kind of the paralegals versus the key holding. The key holding aspect is people bringing their boats in, car for dock, placing that up. I'd be curious to know what lawful ability a community would have or lakefront owner, they purchase that property, to be breaking, including, are there local ordinances? We have about 400 lakes in Oakdale County and a lot of those are lakes that may be easy to contact, a lot of the city, village, manager, township supervisors with lakes, do they have regulation, what do they have? If, you know, if the wheel has been created, to see what's out there in Oakdale, I think that would be a great snapshot. It's all good stuff until you spend, you know, 1.2 a year for home and you want to put in a boat, somebody tells you can't. So I just want to make sure that there is lawful guidance of what we can and cannot do.
Yes, Ms. Luschinger.
And just another suggestion, some of the research with regards to these really heavyweight boats now, there's tanks, I guess, in these boats that you fill with water to get them even heavier. That would be very easy to regulate, but to say, you can have these big boats, but you can't get the tanks full of water because that causes the damage, that causes more wake. And maybe that could be a way that we prevent these heavy, heavy boats in our lake that are ruining your neighbor's patios.
And with that, let me throw a caveat, if there is no law, there should be a lot of wake boats. Ohio, I think, has one, but...
But see, and if we did it like that with the, with the tanks, that would be very easy for an officer to get on the boat, see if there's water in the tank or not, and there, there's your, yeah.
My understanding is you can't regulate the boat type, but you can regulate the activity. And we had, it should be somewhere in your to-do pile, consideration, I believe was being explored, to regulate high wake generation to 200 feet off of shore. Do you recall that?
I do. And, Mr. President, if I may?
Uh huh.
So about a year ago, this board adopted by reference the Water Safety Act, which has certain regulations in it. I made a huge note of concern to me is, what are the state laws? Is, is the local municipality preempted from enacting any ordinances regulating the amount of boat traffic on a public lake? Because this isn't a private lake, there's a DNR boat launch. So those are certain legal questions certainly you need to take into consideration. It's certainly probably not just a problem in this area, but statewide in other states that has heavy boat traffic, that it's not the first time it's been brought up. But I'm concerned from a legal perspective, what your ability locally to enact ordinances may or may not be with regard to that. With regard to wake boats, we did look at that and we couldn't find anything really saying we could or couldn't do that. We can regulate like no, no wake zones, we can regulate hours of, of, you know, speeds like from like 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM. You can do all sports and wakes and creative waves, but there's certain lakes in the area specifically where they have like a no-wake period. So those are things the board can look at, there's a process to go through with the DNR with that, because they are involved in that. I know the DNR is the body responsible for approving marinas, so that we may not be able to regulate those types of things if they have DNR permits. So all good questions, all questions I've been taking notes on to answer from a legal perspective to help you move forward with answering what you can and can't do with regard to local regulation.
And if you might look at that, find some examples of dual jurisdiction, that's fairly big.
Yeah, that's going to be another debate.
In the past, I mean, our previous ordinance on boat operations fee was adopted by both the towns that have a boat. So that answered that question. So if there was an acceptable policy in the past, we get mutual, so it's the same line of the same area, same force.
So, and there's other things that need to be reviewed as well that have been mentioned, such as the rental activity. And I was made aware, even like with our Lake Street Boat Ramp, that last year, there was a resident that lived there that told me that in, on a daily basis, an outlying marina would bring their boat rentals there and drop them off and pick them up. And so that enters into the question about enforcement as well. And there is a need to greatly improve that and how do we do it, much as Mr. Stevens had mentioned it, and even a consideration of noise in some regards. But also comes to mind, commercial use. And what I mean by that is, is there have been some citizens here that have questioned about commercial use on the lake. Right now, there's no permits, there's commercial entities out there, there has been a food restaurant in the past that was on a floating deck. You've got a couple of different commercial considerations happening right now, and that needs to be part of the overall discussion. And I see one person from the public here that would like to add some comments, and I'm going to consider this as open discussion. And Jerry, did you have something you'd like to say? Name and address, please.
My name is Jerry Richards. I live at 535 Indian Wood. I've been on the lake since 1973, and this is not a new issue with people running dock space. We just had our general membership meeting for the Lake Orion Lake Association. Chris Knights is our conservation officer for Oakland County, and the law is very, very clear. You cannot rent your dock space to somebody that does not live at that premises. And they can match the MC numbers up to the property. And they, being the conservation officer, can issue tickets, citation, and it's unlawful to do it. But you might own three, four, five, maybe six boats, and those can all be at your dock as long as those MC numbers match up with your property location. This has been a big issue on the lake. We've gotten more and more of these illegal marinas that are popping up. And for anybody that's doing out there, doing it out there in the, on the lake, I would ask them to contact their insurance company and ask them if they're insured for anybody being injured on their property while they're renting them dock space. And I think the answer is going to be, no, you're on your own. And so the money that the people are making renting the dock space may not offset the damages that they might incur if somebody gets injured. And we all know that you can get injured. We don't know when it's going to happen, but sometime, someplace, some way, it's going to happen. But, and questions, Jerry?
I don't remember those.
Oh, okay. But it was very, very clear to us, under the Public Act 301, which is through the DNR, that it's very easy to apply for a marina permit if you choose to do that. But without a marina permit, you are illegal, illegally renting dock space. So just a word to the wise, some folks are taking notice of this, some people are getting very upset. Congestion on the lake, I've never seen it any worse than it is right now. In fact, we did a little poll over at the, at the Sandbar. Several of those people over there bragged about the fact, yeah, we don't live on the lake, we rent dock space on the lake. And that just, that just sets the stage right there because the word gets out. And then somebody else says, hey, my neighbor might rent you some dock space, and so on and so forth. So it just keeps manifesting itself. Relative to an ordinance, the Vice President of the Michigan Lakes and Streets Relative to an ordinance, the Vice President of the Michigan Lakes and Streams Association, he's a lawyer. And they have, they have several ordinances that you can point to for controlling your local community. And yes, it's true, the village doesn't own the water, the village doesn't regulate the water, but you certainly regulate the land use and the dock attached to your land with an illegal boat at it, you can do that. Several communities have already done it, and it's a good way to get the record set straight. Moselli, when they're, we were just at their presentation, the only boats that are going to be at those docks are going to be the boats that are owned by the people that are buying those, those apartments or owning that property, renting that property, excuse me, their apartments. So I would just say, go forth with your ordinance. Lead, lead by example, and maybe the township will follow along. Because we only have one, one lake, and we split the difference, you know, with, with respect to the village and the township. But lead by example. I would applaud you guys to, to move forward on that. Because we do need some leadership, guidance, and regulation. So, and Jerry, did you have a question for me? Okay, Ken.
Do you recall any of the cases where the Michigan Lakes and Streams Association, uh, did the ordinance, anything that would affect that?
Did the Michigan Lakes and Streams Association write the ordinance? They have several that you can look at.
But do you remember any of the community's evidence?
No, but it's easy to find out. All you gotta do is go to Michigan Lakes and Streams website, and you can talk to the Vice President, and he'll point the way for you. So, and of course, you're going to have to tailor them for your own community. But you don't have to reinvent the wheel, as Jerry was saying, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate, appreciate the question. Thank you. Oh, sorry, Jerry.
Um, the representative to the DNR, have they been actively enforcing the lake ever so long?
What he told us at our public, or excuse me, at our general membership meeting, if a citizen wants to provide him information as to the address of where they believe the boats are being rented, he will take that information and he will look at it, and he'll look for the MC numbers for that property. And he has, he told us, was it seven days? Seven days. He has seven days to do, excuse me, do that review. And at the end of the review, you may not get feedback, but at least you might see some action on it. Now, there's one conservation officer for all of Oakland County. And guess whose lake is number one for complaints? It isn't Waldo Lake, it's Lake Orion. So...
Is a case-by-case complaint base response, and the DNR will come out, just kind of do that?
Yes, the DNR will come out. Yep. Right.
You have to file a complaint, you can call the Rapid, um, complaint, resume their address, and then they have seven days to listen to.
That could go in the newsflash. Right out, we may, there's...
Okay, can we get an answer?
Well, thank you. I really appreciate the fact that this question came up, because we're hearing about it all the time out there.
Have we given our attorney and our manager enough information? We aren't agreeing to have this, I don't think, a drawdown discussion that's constantly... But let's let them get forward, do some of their work and discovery, and see what we can pick up.
One quick question on the drawdown. I understand that you got some DNR information tonight.
We did.
We would like to have a copy. Can that be shared with Lake Orion Lake Association?
Absolutely, Mr. O'Neil. We'd like to use that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I would like, based on our conversation this evening, it appears clear to me that the issue is a legal one. So I move that we direct the village attorney to prepare a report on what authority we may have to regulate these various questions, and present that to the village manager, who may then prepare a report or advisory direction for the board.
Support.
Any comments?
Just really quick, there's a lot of moving parts here, a lot of questions. It might, I might find a real quick answer in state law that says, sorry, you're preempted. But aside from that, because there was a lot of ancillary issues raised or concerns, give me some time, please. It may not happen this boating season, put it that way. And with the process of drafting up possible ordinance, it certainly won't happen this boating season, but be patient. We'll get to it, I promise.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Tom Patterson. I live at 65 North North Shore. And one thing that I would like to say to people is, in June of this year, Lola had its general membership meeting, which was well-attended for what it is. But anyway, we did have the Lake Orion Village Police there, as well as the county sheriff and the DNR there. If anybody is concerned about this, please join Lola. You can do it at Lola.com. It's $20 a year. We do have an annual meeting every year, and a lot of these questions could be answered there. We didn't have the amount of people to ask the questions that were asked here today. But we gathered an awful lot of information over the past, and I would suggest people get involved through that, because it's, it's a great way to go on it. And also, may I suggest that we have microphones here, and I'll... Okay, a lot we can't hear back there, so. Thank you. I appreciate what everybody does here. Thank you.
We were talking just a few minutes ago with Sarah, talking about taking water in for waiting down a boat. Is, that is called ballast. And that's used on freighters and things of that nature, which they do for waiting purposes. I think it would be easy enough to write an ordinance that it'd be illegal to take on ballast on an inland lake, which would then neglect or negate the ability to take in hundreds, if not thousands, of gallons of water to wait down a boat. You're not limiting the type of boat, you're limiting what they can do with it.
Matheson?
Yes.
Narsh?
Yes.
Van Porple?
Yes.
Pobs?
Yes.
Rutt?
Yes.
Luxinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Volshenkary seven zero.
Thank you. Moving on to, I have a six, drawdown discussion, directions, and Mr. O'Neil.
Sorry, this is all, we've all talked about this forever, so I'm just trying to summarize what gets in there. But the issues with the drawdown are, A, who owns and controls the dam? B, who owns and controls the drawdown structure that runs under Oatsoda? And what authority do we have to operate that structure?
Jerry, Jerry, Jerry.
Third, who controls, owns, and operates the cold water intake?
Structure, cold water, drawdown, two.
Two. So these are relevant issues. I've read numerous documents, letter agreements with the M-DOT, et cetera, et cetera. I would really like to get a definitive answer from our attorney about that. Based on those relevant facts, we should be able to make a decision as to whether we want to... Once we know if we control a facility, then the next question I have, what authority do we have to raise in the light of the law? I mean, we, we control the dam, the dam has the regulatory equipment. So these are questions that are legal questions, and I know that there's precedent, past practice, and desire. But I, I think we should request, you know, get this stuff cleaned up. There's enough documents, I believe, in archives to answer all those questions clearly. And once we understand this, we could then make a plan and decide what to do with the lake.
And I think of a topic, I'm going to two, can I just, uh, how many cubic feet per minute and the drawdown to generate, uh, some type of, yes, of what that drawdown may do in what period of time, with speculation. I'm not saying that's necessary to this, of course, to that, because the responsibility and authorization, who has what, who can use it, it's not important. But if we do look at alternative methods, we need to understand that as well. We can't speculate that a 16 inch tube gives us 6 inches in six days. I haven't had any better information than that. 400 and some five foot delay, that's 6 tons of water upstream.
Another point to look at is the existing condition of the drawdown structure. A few years back, when I was acting with village manager, I thought, all the years that I've happened on here, I've never looked inside that shed. I don't know if old people can use it. It was like something from a Bela Lugosi. So, I mean, the existing structure, its reliability. And the other aspect of this is, when we had the spillway damage to a dam, we discovered kind of an error in the agreement we had with the DNR, and they made this a dam. And it's, it's over M-24, it's a state highway, and there's a dam under it. And so there was a considerable amount of legal lawsuit, and they put on about $3 million, $4 million of a period of damage. So we developed a new agreement with the DNR on their, but their responsibility for our maintenance. And I believe there's a caveat for this structure as well with that, in the air. So if there's an existing agreement as to who is responsible for those maintenance and... Hopefully, it's a new problem, but not...
A small example would be, so a resident has complained about tree growth on the west side of M-24. My understanding is, is that embankment was a portion of the dam, things to be maintained, and it's a period of growth by the owner, and I believe that may be done as well.
Is that the section that's right by the corner of Greens Park right there?
Correct.
Yeah, most of that tree growth is an invasive species, so I wonder if there could be help from SISMA? Because we've dealt that along our property, it's an invasive tree that's extremely hard to kill, because you have to do a broad treatment on everything, because it sends out root suckers that are coming up into the volleyball court, too, so that's something to look at.
Mr. President, do you believe that tree root replacement, all that, is in that most recently drafted agreement, so they're going to be divided? Who's responsible for that, some of those facilities, or who is that?
So that's just, similar to what we did in the last case, and that's to direct the village attorney to do the investigation of the points of matter we brought up and bring it back to us, so that we can move forward with some type of a plan. But we need to have this done quickly. I think our office, you're all done? Correct. And we need to make a determination on if we perceive it's legal or not. We need to done the actual agenda items, with whatever data we can use, off of that.
Mr. President, we've gathered as much information as we can, and again, you've filled our plate. And we will get what we can as fast as we can, and I know what, we know what you...
So with the drawdown and then the maintenance and all the considerations can be additional, but that's all good discussions.
Our village engineer, well, I can trust, are fully competent hydro engineers, and they have experience with all the major software and other programs. I've hired them before, many, many years ago. And also a rated engineer, and quite competent. So we have everybody right here in house already to make these decisions for us.
Okay, so I have all four, the third decision, Mr. Stevens.
Mr. Narsh, I presented a case that the gate valve is in significant difficulty. I'm wondering, have we had an engineer take a look at that to determine whether it is? Because that's not just a drawdown issue. If that thing fails, we have a four-foot loss of water that's going to go downstream immediately. So there's a safety issue as to whether that is really a Bela Lugosi thing, or if it is really functional and doesn't have a life expectancy.
And to answer that, I didn't just see the shed. I do believe we had an engineer, our nearest time, take a look at it, and it's structurally safe. The actually, it's a kind of slab. But the internal leaks, or as the recommendation was, that means tension. And that was processed three years ago.
Okay.
And we have it analyzed.
Well, if it is a case of rust in a gate valve and that, that is a problem. And it needs to be stepped forward to one of those other wonderful issues that we need money for.
And that's part of, I think, the discussion on what we can drive.
And it's also part of the discussion of who owns the water.
Jerry Richards, 535 Indian Wood. My hearing isn't what it used to be, and it's very difficult to hear the conversations. But I just want to say, there is an operating agreement with the village. It was signed in 1991. And it was between the village and the DNR for the deep draw tube. I have provided copies of this agreement over the years, because every time this comes up, or every time we're losing our inventory of water on the lake, there's always a question about who actually owns the deep draw tube. In 1991, it was turned over to the village to operate it. Now, I know in recent years, the DNR has come out and helped out on that issue. So I can provide as many copies as you like, but it was signed, it's a legal document, and I can... Wes, you have it. Wes has it, he can provide copies as well. If Wes has misplaced it, I'll provide more copies. Thank you. Secondly, as far as the mechanics of drawing down the lake, we can drop the lake one foot very easily at the dam by turning the one-foot blocks 90 degrees, and that'll take down, take the lake down one foot. I understand the concern of the individual that owns the building, that the old structure flows through. I understand that completely. But we got a 30-inch pipe over there for the deep draw. Maybe we could take some of the burden off the, of the way we did it in the past by maybe throttling with our draw tube, or not even using that, and do an engineering study to see if we can drop the lake with the 30-inch draw tube. That's a big tube. That handles a lot of water. So, and it's all cold water. It's not the warm water. And that's what we've been sending down the creek with the old structure that's over there in the south corner of Pelton's Point. So I just leave those thoughts with you, and I hope that something comes of it, because I think earlier this evening, you were presented with some data that clearly supports the fact that the people want it. Statistically, the people want this to happen. So I leave you with that thought. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion for support. Yes, sir.
Sorry about that. Real quick.
Jason Peltier, Oatsoda. I'm only saying this because it's come to my attention several times by guests coming into Oatsoda, that we as Oatsoda are responsible for the not doing the drawdown. We are not. Mr. Lamb mentioned the name Oatsoda, so I just want on the record that Oatsoda has nothing to do with no drawdown this year, so that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to call the session. And we go to the above, and motion for support. Have a ask for roll call, Dan, please.
Rutt?
Yes.
Hobbs?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Yes?
Yes.
Thank you. It's hard to hear it off the mic. Lamb?
Yes.
Luxinger?
Yes.
Matheson?
Yes.
Narsh?
Yes.
Van Porckley?
Yes.
Volshenkary, seven zero.
Thank you. Good discussion. Thank you, everyone. We're going to move on to the, that concludes our agenda items. We do have a motion called public, the non-agenda items. I'll open that, and anybody has anything to do with it, go for it.
Steve. Yep. Me again. I believe we all believe in a democratic process and the vote. That's very important and critical in our society. I have prepared a ballot, not a ballot, but a petition for the November election. And I would like to present it to you, the council, who are all believers in our democratic process, hoping that you will all sign that petition with regard to the TIF. Thank you.
Thank you. Vote for public. Move on to House of Representatives.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
I don't have anything today.
Yes. Two patch jobs on Jackson Street. I saw that one was done. Are you coming down to do the other one soon?
We, our asphalt contractors are gonna be doing it when they're in the area. It's such a small, it's like four by six foot, so they're not gonna make a special trip for it. But when they're in the area, and it's hopefully soon, I'll get on them. It's gonna be done professionally, because we don't have a roller.
Okay, is that?
If we do it, it's gonna look kinda.
Is that in the near future, or?
Yeah, yeah, very, very near.
Okay, 'cause I was gonna, you know, that one, it surprised me, it was done today. So when'd you do that?
The guys did the one Friday.
Oh, did he? Okay. Cool. All right, thank you.
Mr. O'Neal. I have so many comments. The, so tonight I went to a presentation at the Bachi Ball Club by the Jerry Corporation. There were quite a few people there, it was a public invite for them to present their new projects. So that, who was my neighbors have asked questions about these projects, what's going on, what's going on, what's going on. I'm happy to report to you all that they've redone the parking lots and entrances to the satisfaction of M Dots, and I believe to some great improvement to the community. So I'm very pleased to see that. And also, I was able to get some really good snacks for once, to support eating, free to the council meetings, but was starving tonight, and I need to talk. So with that, finally, the project's coming along nicely. Still deeply concerned about the EDA capture of all the $80 million in tax revenue, and concerned about the tax abatements, so we can pay for the dams repaired, road repairs, and lots of things that are there. So hopefully, what, Mr. Stevens' petition gets before the voters in the fall. I'd be happy to sign it quickly. And, or I hope that some effort comes from, you know, this joint committee, to help alleviate the land burden. Thank you. This whole comment, and maybe, well, this is a, I have a comment. Where are we, I think, does that mean, on the side of the bridge that we bought, and have to go over a big tree, and into Forest Park, down over the creek. Last I heard, you were waiting for an interview, or said something to do with, with my first type, height of, but we got a little, but maybe specifically, we need to talk with Joe.
So Mr. O'Neal and I met with the engineers this past Friday. We meet with her every other Friday to go over a lot of the issues that you guys have, and the citizens have. This came up. Originally, they were having a hard time, so that bridge came in two sections, well, actually, three sections, but two are joined. They were having a hard time finding an engineer to sign off on the piece that we want to put over the Meeks Park section, because it was stick-built and not manufactured with a tag like the other piece. She has since found an engineer to sign off on it, and she's working with them, and it should be coming along. So.
I first want to give my condolences to Reserve Sergeant Guy Higgins' family and his department. Thank you for that speech. It's nice to hear employers speak so highly of their colleagues. Also, just to put something else on your plate, Mr. O'Neal, just, we've talked about this before, the applications for events in our community. We've asked to have the update, or I believe Teresa has asked to have the website updated, so it says in big, bold letters, "Please submit," 90 days? 120 days before. So, you know, out of the four events that we approved, one doesn't have an issue. The other three have issues. So anyway, if we could get something on the website soon, and get the, these applications submitted earlier, that'd be great. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you. I wish to, just to acknowledge the policy of the affiliation of the, of Mr. O'Neal, here at the village office, first pick here.
Is it Wednesday?
Wednesday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday?
I'm sorry, Wednesday. It is Wednesday, the Asian Monday, Wednesday. Also, I covered the presentation event, seeing by the development of Jerry, and I wish to thank them, because they continue to make efforts to inform all of, and be very transparent, and work for ways to work with you, my preacher. Lastly, our discussion about lake issues around Lake Orion and the village. Something that we might want to consider, think about going forward is threats of use to those properties. We have a number of docks that are on those properties that should not be, and we have, I believe, being active, some use agreements. And we need to turn into revenue opportunities, where for that growth of use of that dock, we pay an annual fee when it's committed. And there's many applications out there, where these properties could be running generators. Right now, it's just the use, without any kind of enforcement, and it's something that could be very threatening for that community. And I have a opinion, I believe, about discussions going forward, while that's a community. Village manager comments?
Only that I've enjoyed my stay so far. I'm meeting a lot of people. I try to get out with Wes at least once a week, if not twice a week, and we're gaining on, I don't know what to tell you, lots to do.
Good. Thank you very much. Is that it, sir?
That's it.
So I have a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Or, oh, very, because we can talk.
All right.
Please adjourn, and take your time.